Good morning and welcome to the regular session of Elgin County Council. It is Tuesday, May the 28th, 2024, 9:00 AM, and I will call this meeting to order. First order of business is the adoption of the minutes.
Resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on May 14th, 2024 be adopted.
If there are no errors or omissions, I'll entertain a motion from Councillor Noble and seconded by Councillor Sloan, that the minutes be adopted. All in favor? That's carried. Remind members of any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. Seeing none, brings us down to Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now move into Committee of the Whole.
Mover and seconder, Deputy Warden Jones and Councillor Jiguer, all in favor? That is carried. Section six, reports of council, outside boards and staff. Six one, manager of economic development, tourism and strategic initiatives, Gunther Homes Tax Increment Equivalent Grant Application. Good morning, Carolyn.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to County Council. Before council today, there is a tax increment equivalent grant application from Gunther Homes. The tax increment equivalent grant is one of the incentives offered under our community improvement plan. And this grant essentially defers the increase in taxation due to a major development. So following a major development, the property is reassessed and whatever that increase in taxation is, developments can apply to receive that back. Now, it is on a decrease by 10% each year. So the first year following the major development, they could get 100% of that increase back. The second year, it would be 90%, and that's decreased by 10% for five years. So this application is from Peter Lettman Gunther, Inc., and they're located within the township of Malahide. And they are proposing to build a 38,000 square foot facility with six business units. And this would be a mixed-use facility with both commercial and industrial uses. The land is currently vacant, and this project would see that land transformed into a space where entrepreneurs can start and grow their businesses, creating more jobs for residents. There is currently one of these facilities on the location. This would be the second one. The first one employs about 100 people, so it is estimated that a second facility would employ an additional 100 people. So the total cost of construction is estimated to be $1,800,000. And again, mixed-use facility with industrial and commercial uses. So based on 100% industrial occupancy, the value of the rebate would be about $109,000 from the county portion of the taxes. This request went to Malahide Council on May 2nd and was approved by Malahide Council as well. Staff are recommending that County Council approve this grant, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you for that report, Carolyn. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I do. I have a question regarding ownership. Mr. Gunther is going to retain ownership of the parcel and this will be rental properties?
That is correct.
Okay. What happens to the program if the, if Mr. Gunther sells the property partway through?
So that does not transfer over.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any additional questions from anyone? Catherine, please.
Resolved that the report titled Gunther Homes Tax Increment Equivalent Grant Application from the Manager of Economic Development Tourism and Strategic Initiatives dated May 28th, 2024 be received and filed, and that County Council approves the tax increment equivalent grant for Peter Lettman Gunther Incorporated, and that the Chief Administrative Officer be directed to sign the financial agreement between the County of Elgin, the Township of Malahide, and Peter Lettman Gunther Incorporated.
Do we have a mover and second reply? Councillor Jiguer and Councillor Widner will second. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Six point two, again, from the Manager of Economic Development Tourism Strategic Initiatives, the Elgin Incentives 2023 Year-End Review and the 10-Year Program Review. Carolyn?
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Through you to council. In 2015, Elgin County, in partnership with its local municipal partners, adopted a community improvement plan. So the goal of this plan was to encourage redevelopment activities that make efficient use of lands, buildings, and infrastructure, and to attract investment in a cohesive and coordinated manner. The program offers financial incentives to encourage private investment in these areas. There are two intakes each year, and we offer a variety of different grants, including a facade and signage grant, a building improvement grant, and also an outdoor art grant. And each year, we provide an update on the allocation of these funds to council. There are $80,000 that we allocate each year. And in 2023, Elgin incentives had a total of 16 approved applications from April to November with a total investment of Elgin of $78,000. One successful applicant withdrew their application after the project was approved. And that explains why it's a little bit less than $80,000. So eight applications were denied this year as they did not meet the minimum required score. There is an implementation committee that consists of county staff and the CAOs of each local municipality. And all applications are evaluated and scored by the criteria in the CIP document. And they do need to receive a minimum score to be considered for funding. And in your, the report before you, we have the breakdown in grants by grant stream and also by municipality. Now, this grant or this program was established in 2015 for a 10-year term. And if council wishes to extend the term of this program, an amendment to the CIP is required. And this amendment does need to follow a specific process, including preconsultation with the ministry, notice of statutory public meeting. We do need to make background information available and the amended CIP document for public review prior to the meeting. And then a bylaw would need to be brought forward at the local municipal level to adopt any changes to the plan. And then we would have to provide written notice to the Ministry of Municipal Fares and Housing. Since there is a process involved in extending the CIP, it is also a good time to do a thorough review to see if there are any other changes that we should make at the same time. We don't want to go through this process more than we have to. So since, again, we do need, if we would like to extend the program, we do need to go through that process. It's also a good time to review the program in general. Again, it was adopted in 2015. We've seen many changes since then. And so we have consulted with Paul Hicks from Republican Urbanism on the scope and the costing for this review, and that's included in your report. And again, the estimate is that it would be about $40,000 to engage a planning consultant to do this review with us. And staff are suggesting that this be taken from the 2024 Elgin incentives budget to complete that review so we can complete it in advance of 2025. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report, Carolyn. Does anyone have any questions? Deputy Warden Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Carolyn. If we go ahead with this consultation, would they look back on the success rate for the past five years or whatever that might be with the businesses that have been involved, if they're still active, if they've been successful in this venture? Is that part of it?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Deputy Warden Jones. Yes, we would be taking a look at all of the data from the past 10 years to see the successes and also which streams were most popular. So again, looking at past data, but also taking a look at the current environment. So there would be multiple different streams involved in the review, as well as consultation with each of our local municipal partners.
Okay. Councillor Sloan?
Thank you through the warden to Manager of Economic Development Tourism and Strategic Initiatives. It says at the recommendation that this is for information. And my question is, is that we've just announced, when I hear the name Mr. Hicks, who of course has been a great addition to the, to the roster here at Elgin County, we are hiring a full-time person to lead a in-house planning department. So the question's twofold. One, this is for information only. Second, is this something that should be held off until we have someone in-house on June the 19th that might be able to add his or his input and suggestions? Thank you.
There, sorry, I should have said there is an additional recommendation that through a technical error, I guess, wasn't included in the report, and that was for $40,000 to be allocated to the review. Definitely, I think the new Director of Planning should be involved in this process. I believe in consultation with Blaine. The new director will have a lot to do to establish a new department and services, and a planning consultant would still be recommended for this review, but they would be working closely with the new Director of Planning, and certainly they would be very involved in the process.
Any further questions? Yes, Councillor Jiguer.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, I would, I would support a thorough review. I think it's always good to benchmark things and the performance of the program. And as part of the RFP, I would specify, I would like to see specified that the consultation with businesses will be going to the businesses. So that's the habit we're trying to maintain. And so that we don't send a survey or we don't do an open house where people have to come to us, but we will go to businesses and go find out how the program has worked for them. So that would be my request. Please.
Okay, thank you for that. Anything additional? Okay, seeing none. Catherine?
Resolved that the report titled Elgin incentives 2023 Year-End Review and 10-Year Program Review from the Manager of Economic Development Tourism and Strategic Initiatives dated May 28th, 2024 be received and filed, and that $40,000 from the Elgin incentives budget be allocated to the 10-year review.
Do we have a mover and second reply? Deputy Warden Jones will move. Councillor Latham will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And thank you for that. Moving on with six point three, we have the Director of Engineering Services, the St. George Street CR 26 Reconstruction Tender Number 2024-T09, the contract award. Good morning, Peter.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of County Council. As part of the 24 capital budget, a tender was advertised for the reconstruction of St. George Street. Council will recall, this was a deferred project from last year, and now we're going to construct it this year. The section of St. George Street that's going to be under construction is approximately 1.1 kilometers in length, and it's immediately east of Wellington Road through the S bend of Cowan Park to the railway tracks. There were 15 contractors that downloaded the tender document and eight submitted a bid. The lowest compliant bid was received from PV Excavating Construction, PVX Construction Limited, their formal name, at $3.28 million. The good news is the capital budget allocation was $3.6 million. Therefore, we are anticipating a forecasted surplus of approximately $300,000. The municipalities of Central Elgin and the city of St. Thomas have been consulted throughout the, the project design, and their input has been incorporated into the project. And regular and ongoing communication to the affected property owners will, will continue to occur. A number of letters have been issued already identifying what the project's scope is and maybe what inconveniences they may experience through the construction. And that will continue with door knockers throughout major project milestones throughout the project so they are fully understand, fully understand where we are in the project and the schedule. I'd like to take the opportunity to also acknowledge the Government of Ontario for their funding assistance through the OSIF program, the Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund. That funding that the county received this year partially offset the total project cost for this reconstruction of St. George Street. I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Yes, Councillor Sloan. Through you, Warden, to Mr. Ducek. Two questions. One, what is the amount? We always like to see our friends with the Government of Ontario helping us out. I just wanted to know if you could give me an idea of how this project specifically helps us or what the percentage is from the government? And second of all, the door knockers. Great idea. The people that I hear from, you know, that every kind of communication during things like this is important. Is that done by us or is that done by the team that, the, the project management? Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden, to Councillor Sloan. I don't have the exact number for the OSIF funding, but it's in the neighborhood of about $2.5 million. So it's about two-thirds of this project cost. That's an annual fund that we receive from the province, Ontario. We also receive federal gas tax funding, and those help offset the capital budget expenditures on an annual basis. As far as the door knockers, we issue them two to three times throughout the project, and they're those key project milestones. It's either our staff or the contractor, depending on who's available. And specifically, it's when new concrete curb or sidewalk gets installed and they can't access their driveway. That, that's a critical time that disrupts the residents' normal activities and routines. Another time is when fresh sod gets laid. We'll water it for a few times, but unless the homeowner starts watering the sod itself, then you know what it looks like very quickly. So the door knockers are simple reminders through those project milestones. And, and we've used them in the past enrichment, most recently in the municipality of them.
Follow-up?
Yes, just quickly. Thank you, Mr. Ducek, and I appreciate that. If there's ever the opportunity for someone that's interested in this and that it's in the township, it's a municipality of Central Elgin, if there's any ever an opportunity in substantial projects like this for having, let's say, a councillor or a local mayor come up and take a look so that he or she can better discuss issues with their constituents, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Additional questions? Councillor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Warden. To Mr. Ducek, could we be included, Andrew and I, in the correspondence that go out to the neighborhood? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden, to Councillor Noble. I hope you've been circulated some of our most recent correspondence that we have sent them. It's, it's our intent to include the, the local county councillors as well as the warden and deputy warden whenever we construct in a local municipality. I'll double check to ensure you're included. It's our intention to always include you. Yes.
Anyone else? Deputy Warden Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Peter. A little unrelated topic, but Union Road, that was amazing, how fast and efficient they've done that and without very little disruption. It's, it's got well done.
If I can, Mr. Warden, through you to Deputy Warden Jones. Thank you. I'll pass it on to the contractor who's road a mill. For your information, we will be scheduling hot mix resurfacing, which is the next step in that rehabilitation process, hopefully to begin next week, and that's Branco construction. And they'll be repaving the road and providing new granular shoulders. We're doing our best to try to coordinate the construction of a municipal drain mid-project. It doesn't look like we're going to get that culvert installed in time, so you'll see a short section of the road skipped with pavement, and that's purposely so we're not digging up fresh asphalt.
Yeah, supplemental?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thanks. Yeah, timings everything is, and this is a little bit late in the project's schedule, but anyway, it happens.
Okay. Anyone else? All in all, the tender is a good news story, Peter, so thank you very much for that. Appreciate it. Catherine?
Resolved that PVX Construction Limited be selected to complete the St. George Street County Road 26 Reconstruction Project, tender number 2024-T09, at a total price of $3,279,205, including a $335,000 contingency allowance and exclusive of HST, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be directed and authorized to sign the contract.
Move by Councillor Sloan, seconded by Councillor Noble. All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Moving on to six four, Director of Engineering Services, Reduced Speed Zone Amendment for Kingsmill's Corner. Peter?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of County Council. This report contemplates a minor revision to an existing 60 kilometer an hour speed zone through Kingsmill Corners, which is on Ron McNeil Line in the township of Malahide and extends a little bit into the municipality of Central Elgin as well. The attached map on page 29 really showcases what this change is. You'll see the existing speed zone on that map, and we are expanding it approximately 100 meters in both directions to incorporate all of the new development that has incurred in this small community. We're also taking the opportunity with this amendment to have a more fulsome consolidation of the previous amendments to our speed bylaw. And hence, you'll see that the full speed bylaw is included in the council package as more of a housekeeping item. I'd be pleased to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Peter, and compliments on the map. Any questions? Well, Peter, you have comment?
Well, if I may, Mr. Warden, since you had mentioned the map, I'd just like to acknowledge our GIS student Tyler Young, who created that map for us. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Again, call for questions? Comments? Councillor Jiguer?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a quick comment to say that this is another stretch that is always a subject of concern of, for speeding. So this is one step, but hopefully, perhaps depending on the outcome of some of the different methodologies we'll try in on, I forget the name of the road that we discussed last at our last meeting. But this might be another stretch where we might want to explore some other techniques than, but obviously, it starts with the, you know, speeding limit and, or speed limit, and then we'll go from there. But to be continued, I think. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else? Catherine, please.
Resolved that the report titled Reduced Speed Zone Amendment, Kingsmill Corner, from the Director of Engineering Services dated May 28th, 2024, be received and filed, and that the Reduced Speed Zone Bylaw be revised as follows. Schedule C, maximum 60 kilometers per hour. Road 52, Section A, from 285 meters west of the west property limit of Springwater Road, easterly for a distance of 1,025 meters.
Mover and seconder, please. Deputy Warden Jones, Councillor Jiguer will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Six five, Director of Legal Services, PS 2411, Amendments to the Land Division Committee Remuneration. Good morning, Nick.
Good morning, Warden. Through you to council. I'll be very brief with this one. So this is further to council's direction from its April the 9th meeting in its covering report for the bylaw that appears on the agenda today. And essentially, it changes Section 2 of Bylaw 2303 to adjust the remuneration of Land Division Committee as discussed on April 9th. And then there's a Second Amendment 2305, which deletes the restriction on site visits that had restricted it to only the Secretary Treasurer. And both of those amendments are in conformance with council's direction, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Nick. And obviously, yes, this was what was directed by council. Any further discussion? I'll bring up a point. There were some pieces of information when we last discussed it that I wasn't aware of before. And I know that there were some correspondence that had been received. And hopefully, Nick, you've had an opportunity to see some things from a particular member from Land Division who's been there. Apparently, according to this individual, when the inspections were done, there was a per diem or something that was provided at the time as well. Do you have any history on that or know of any history on that?
Yes, Mr. Warden. So the way that site visits used to be compensated was at the rate of $65 per site visit, but did not have the mileage then included. And so that was addressed during my April 9th presentation, and council directed that mileage was the way to go this time around. And so that, that's what's included in these amendments rather than that per diem amount.
Fair enough, Nick. And that's exactly the point I was trying to get at, was that this was felt that was a somewhat equivalent measure of compensation. And if that's, is what satisfies council, then that, it'll be addressed. Any questions or concerns from anyone? Councillor Noble?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Is there an estimate on the added cost to Elgin County to upgrade this?
Yes, there is. It's approximately $4,200 for meetings, $5,000 for mileage. If I've got that correct.
Yes, through you, Mr. Warden. And that's intended to be offset by a change to the fees and charges by law that'll be brought forward, where we will increase the cost of each application by $100, which, given our historical number of applications, should offset it almost exactly year to year.
Okay. Any other questions? Councillor Widner?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. It's good to see the site visits come back. And I don't know how it ever fell off the rails. I don't think it ever should have because there's nothing like seeing something actually with your own eyes and to make a decision. I know Malahide, we've had a couple, and a site visit changes your mind when you see it. So I totally agree and hope it works out well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Seeing no other. Catherine, please.
Resolved that the report titled PS 2411, Amendments to LDC Remuneration from the Director of Legal Services dated May 28th, 2024, be received and filed, and that council approve the bylaw presented for its consideration on the May 28th, 2024 agenda that amends bylaw numbers 2303 and 2305.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Councillor Widner will move. Councillor Noble will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Brings us down to Section 7, Council Correspondence, 7-1, Items for Consideration, 7-1-1. We have the Elgin County Drowning Prevention Proclamation and Flag Raising Request. Anyone wish to speak to this? We did participate in this last year. If council's so amenable, we can do it again this year. And I believe it's for July the 21st through to the 27th. Have? We have a council meeting scheduled right around then? 23rd? Sounds like a good day. Any thoughts? Concerns? Catherine?
Resolved that the council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin support the request from the Elgin County Drowning Prevention Coalition to hold a flag raising and proclaim July 21st to 27th, 2024 as Drowning Prevention Week in the County of Elgin.
Mover and seconder, Councillor Noble and Councillor Latham will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. 7-2, Items for Information. We have the Consent Agenda. We have three pieces of correspondence, seven, the letter from Quad County Support Services, thanking Elgin County for the community grant. 7-2-2, the resolution from the city of Belleville in support of family doctors. And 7-2-3, the 2024 Accessibility Open House poster. Does anyone have any comments or wish to address any of these items on the consent agenda? Councillor Widner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I think we should support the city of Bellevue healthcare resolution. We all know family doctors are getting harder and harder to get and more leaving, and there's specific reasons they're leaving, and they need to be addressed. Maybe the province has to step up, but I know in our local area, we've lost another one just because people want to retire, and I don't blame them. But we have to come up with a better answer than what we're doing because we're doing anything right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that. Any other comments? Deputy Warden Jones?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I would agree with Councillor Widner. This is an ongoing battle, and it's not getting any easier to attract new doctors to replace the ones who are retiring. And the, plus the fact that our population is going to explode here in the next few years, according to the according to the province and everybody else around us seems to think that's going to happen. So we need to change the way we're doing things at the provincial level and ensure that we're going to have doctors for the future.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Anyone else? Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just wanted to support the statements by both councillors concerning the need for family doctors in this area, and specifically, the Belleville. The Belleville Resolution does touch upon not only paying doctors more, but reducing the administrative burden, which the ministry is aware of, because we've spoken to the ministry many times about reducing the administrative burden. And the more we can support that kind of idea, the better. So I'll certainly support this resolution.
Thank you for those comments. Counselor Latham.
I'd just like to say that I'm in full support of what I've just heard from three councillors. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, Catherine, have you got something for us?
Resolved that correspondence items 7.2.1 and 7.2.3 be received and filed, and that the Corporation of the County of Elgin support the resolution from the City of Belleville regarding support of family doctors in the province of Ontario.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Cookett will move. Counselor Widner will second. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. We're moving along pretty quickly this morning. We're at Section 8, Other Business, 8-1, Statements by Members. Counselor Jagir.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a quick note to invite my colleagues to save the date, September 21st, for the Terrace Lodge Comforts of Home Charity Bowling Tournament. It will be an opportunity for each of our respective municipalities for a bit of a friendly competition, for good cause, of course. And it will be held at Size Bowling Lanes and Lounge, and lots and lots of details to come. But for now, please save the date to ensure that we can all participate, and also wrap up the campaign on a high note and success. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Sounds like it'll be a lot of fun. Anyone else? I see people are marking their calendars already. Success already. There you go. Just to remind, there are a few different events coming up on this particular weekend. If you want to test your crosscut saw challenge, come on down to Vienna Edison Fest on Saturday. Kickoff around 9:00, 9:30 at the museum, and then over in the park. I believe we also have the Accessibility Open House on this weekend. What else? There's a trooping of the cadets, the air cadets, also on the first. It's a busy day. And then, the following week, I think Deputy Warden Jones has a festival near and dear to his heart.
Annual Rosie Rhubarb, all-you-can-eat rhubarb. I would have to send my apologies. I can't make the saw cut at Crosscut. So I have the Lions Golf Tournament that I have to attend.
Do well.
So that's just another event that's that day, too.
There you go. Absolutely. Okay. Anything else, or any other statement from members? I suppose I should put a plug in for the back of this page. Last weekend, they held their wartime event. It was, I believe, the first one that they've held. It was wet first thing in the morning, but it was actually well-attended, and it was a really educational time for me. I had a lot of fun down there. Got to see a lot of the attractions, as well as speak to a veteran of the Queen's Own rifles in his 101st year. They had a missed wartime worker pageant. That was a lot of fun. A mock wedding. They had, and I got to be the father to bride for that. That was fun. Never expected to have that opportunity in my life. There's a lot to see down there, including the, you know, the gravesite of Colonel Talbot. And just a lot of things. St. Peter's Church was amazing. So it'll be back on next year, I think. If you missed it this year, look for it next year. As I say, the summer's just starting to ramp up. A lot of festivals and things. Avail yourself if you can. Are there any notices of motion this morning? Matters of urgency. Okay, it brings us to Section 9, Closed Meeting Items.
Resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act Section 239-2. Closed meeting item number one, closed meeting minutes, May 14, 2024.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Noble will move. Counselor Latham will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Welcome back. Motion to rise and report.
Resolved that we do now rise and report.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Noble, Deputy Warden Jones. All in favor? That was carried. Closed meeting item number one.
Resolved that the May 14, 2024, closed meeting minutes be adopted.
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Widner and Counselor Noble. All in favor? That's carried. Motion to adopt recommendations from the Committee of the Whole.
Resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the Committee of the Whole.
Mover and seconder, Counselor Noble, Counselor Cookett. All in favor? That's carried. Section 12, Consideration of the Bylaws, 12-1.
Being a bylaw to authorize speed limits. Resolved that bylaw number 2419 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Do we have a mover and seconder for that? Counselor Noble and Counselor Jagir. All in favor? That's carried. 12-2, Bylaw Number 2020, excuse me, 2420.
Being a bylaw to amend bylaw number 2303 and bylaw number 2305 for the purpose of adjusting remuneration of the Land Division Committee. Resolved that bylaw number 2420 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Mover and seconder, Counselor Noble and Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? That is carried. The Confirming Bylaw.
Being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the Municipal Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin at the May 28, 2024 meeting. Resolved that bylaw number 2421 be now read a first, second, and third time and finally passed.
Mover and seconder, Counselor, Deputy Warden Jones. Did I see Counselor Latham? Will second that. All in favor? That's carried. Which brings us to the Adjournment Motion.
Resolved that we do now adjourn at 9:41 a.m. to meet again on June 11, 2024 at 9 o'clock a.m.
Mover and seconder, Counselor Widner and Counselor Sloan will second. All in favor? And that is carried. Thank you for joining us for this very quick meeting. Still, important business for the county, and those who joined us virtually. Have a great day.